Grateful that I am joined by my Deputy Mayor of Labor, Bridget Early, thank you for your leadership. Hailo Gutierrez, Lamont Robinson, Mike Rodriguez, and Jason Irvin. All of these Alders that are with us today, I'm grateful for you all's leadership. Today, the City of Chicago upheld and reaffirmed its commitment to workers' rights while strengthening standards for the arrival of asylum seekers here in the City of Chicago. First, I'm grateful that our city continues to demonstrate its recognition of the value of our city's workforce and working families. We amended the Chicago Paid Time Off Ordinance, which guarantees up to five days paid time off and five sick days for Chicago's workers. I am proud to have worked alongside the Alders Rodriguez, Gutierrez, Irvin, again Lamont Robinson, of course, our Deputy Mayor, Bridget Early, employers, workers, rights organizations to craft a compromise that delivers the most progressive paid leave policy in the entire nation. Today's trailer ordinance will ensure that employers have sufficient time to understand and comply with the law, the law that strengthens our workforce, our businesses, and our entire economy, while providing the flexibility of our employers to implement the changes of this magnitude. Workers deserve the basic dignity of time off to care for themselves and their families. And I applaud the City Council for continuing to engage on this issue to address these outstanding concerns. We also approved an agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, this agreement that we've put forth in order for a fair contract for the members of our police department and the people of the City of Chicago. And again, I'm grateful to the Vice Chair of Police and Fire Committee, Lamont Robinson, for your leadership. And this agreement is in alignment with Chicago's current policing needs, the economic landscape as well as the budgetary capabilities. With this agreement, we not only support the brave men and women who serve on the front lines, but we maintain our commitment to a holistic collaborative approach towards community safety. We will continue to work towards greater accountability within the department and for greater trust between the people of Chicago and the police. So I'm grateful that the City Council today rejected an arbitration measure today that would have undermined our police disciplinary process. While we recognize police officers' rights to arbitration, it is crucial that disciplinary cases be handled in a manner that allows for transparency and true accountability. We are steadfastly committed to supporting our brave first responders, and we will continue to advance reform that increases transparency in order to build a better, stronger, and a much safer Chicago. And finally, we approved an amendment, bus safety ordinance, that will enact stricter penalties, including impoundment and towing of buses that refuse to comply with the safety protocols set by the city. We have put these protocols in place because after being bused thousands of miles, these rogue buses, these operators are dropping new arrivals off in Cicero, Rosemont, Schiller Park, and places other than the designated landing zone. This inhumane treatment further endangers the safety and security of asylum seekers and adds additional strain to city departments, volunteers, and mutual aid partners that are tasked with easing what is already a harsh transition. And so we are putting these companies on notice that this blatant disregard of the city regulations will not be tolerated. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Hello, Mayor. You still have about 550 migrants sleeping between police stations and O'Hare, and I was wondering now that you are not pursuing the idea of building refugee camps, what are you going to do with them?
Well, we're actually down to only one police district that still has migrants sleeping in them. And so, as you know, I inherited this crisis where police districts were established as shelter for families and individuals seeking asylum. A month ago, we had as many as 4,000. We have decompressed 21 of the 22 police districts. There is one left, and we're working to get that resolved today. Look, all of our options are still the same. As I've stood up, breaking mortar shelters, temporary shelters for this mission, we will continue to do that.
Tomorrow, your Board of Education is going to vote on your plan or your five-year plan to change the focus of CPS back to neighborhood schools. Opponents are saying that that levels down the education for Chicago students. What's your argument?
Well, what's being actually really admitted here is that we have not focused on neighborhood schools. The fact that we're even having a conversation about how we're going to invest in neighborhood schools, that is a blatant admission that we have not been focusing on neighborhood schools. Now, look, you can focus on neighborhood schools while also making sure that the education system that has yielded the type of results for only some families, that that doesn't become the prevailing form of how we educate people in the City of Chicago. The fact that we have children and families that have to approach public education with hand and hat in hand, that is not the dreams of our ancestors. I've said this repeatedly, public education at the expense of the state, after all, is a Negro idea. And those are the words of W.B. Du Bois. "This city has to fulfill a promise of public accommodations that were birthed and propagated by those who were descendants of slaves." I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation to live out the hopes and aspirations of those who were descendants of slaves.
Mayor Johnson, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
FOP President John Katanzara said a short time ago that the FOP during contract negotiations offered to make public details of certain misconduct cases against police officers, the charges against them, the status of the case, if it was adjudicated. He said, however, that city negotiators declined that offer. Is that the case?
Well, what we have and what was presented today was that there was a financial package that respects the workers, our brave men and women who serve on the front line every single day. And as someone who supports the interests of workers, it's imperative that we actually give people the pay that they deserve. You know, as far as the arbiter's decision to eliminate the ability for the public to be able to see and witness violations or accusations of violations where the public trust could continue to be eroded, we disagreed with that decision. And so today, there was a clear decision that was made that, you know, any police officer that violates the trust or is accused of violating the trust of the people that they were sworn to protect and serve, that the public should be able to see with full view how those decisions are being made, but also what those accusations are.
Hey, Mayor, the bus ordinance that you mentioned, can you talk about some of the specifics that would lead to a bus actually being impounded, to the criteria that would go into that? And do you expect that to be enforced starting immediately?
Well, it was passed today mainly because, you know, we have a real irresponsible, inhumane practice that's coming from the border. And what I've said from the very beginning, we have to create some structure and order and some calm to this crisis, and my leadership has done just that, decompressing our police districts, only one left, while also maintaining, of course, the expectation of the people of Chicago that we're actually serving those who are protected by international law that are seeking asylum here. Now, you know, what the ordinance is very clear about is that there's a 48-hour notification that has to be provided. There are very clear times in which buses can drop asylum seekers off in the City of Chicago, and there's a specific location. This is not, you know, an unusual dynamic. This is a type of order and structure that my leadership is providing, and we'll continue to do just that.
And just to follow up, Block Club and others have sought contracts and other payment agreements between the city and shelters, privately owned buildings. Your administration has not provided those. Why not? Why not provide the full contracts with, I believe, 26 private shelters that you've stood up?
Well, again, the mission, of course, here is the mission to holla at migrants. This international crisis where global population shift all over the world, that we're standing up as many shelters as we possibly can. You know, as far as these contracts are concerned, I mean, these are ongoing dynamics that, you know, continue to require us to move with some expediency. You know, as far as the specifics in the contract, just like any business that we do in the City of Chicago, you know, these contracts are meant to not only serve a purpose, but if there are some specific elements and dynamics that you wish to see, I'm happy to make sure that our team gets back with you. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Johnson, Alderman Lopez had shared with some of us what appears to be a draft order to set aside or repeal Lori Lightfoot's emergency order of August 2022. And that leads us to wonder, how is it that City Council, which is supposed to have oversight over you, cannot get any answer from spring to summer to fall, going on winter, on where the money is going for all this monitoring stuff? It seems that the people I'm talking to, out south at least, are saying that puts you on par with Tiffany Hainard out in Thornton Township in the Village of Thornton as far as accountability on the spending. What are you guys going to do to restore faith and confidence in the voters, at least out that way, that you all are doing the right thing with the money?
Yeah, thank you for that question. There was no budget for this migrant crisis that was voted on and passed by the previous city council. So not only did I inherit an international crisis, there was no budget, there was very little infrastructure. And within almost seven months now that I've been in office, we've literally had to create a budget, establish some structure and order, advocate at the federal level around international policies, while also making sure that we're building an operation that centers people's humanity. Now, I can't speak for the previous city council. What I can say, though, is that this budget provides a real structure and frame around what our capabilities are. And again, my job is to level set, address what I inherited, and build off the progress that we have established thus far. Look, this international crisis clearly is not going anywhere anytime soon. The people of Chicago voted for me to provide structure, to create some discipline, and some accountability to not just this mission, but all of our work. And I've done just that.
So to clarify, where is the accountability? Because we've heard over and over again that you've inherited that. That is a fact. Nairs from Taiwan and have inherited from a mess from other news. So how are you going to reconcile figures, again, where people have confidence? It's easy to say, well, we've got a budget that's going to get things in line. But where is the budget that makes us secure that our money is going in the right place and just not every which way?
Well, look, that's why you have an entire body of government. The City Council, who voted on this budget, a budget that's balanced, that invested a quarter of a billion dollars into homelessness, you know, a budget that invested $100 million into violence prevention, a budget that increased its youth employment dollars up to $80 million. The work that we continue to do to make sure that we are addressing not just systemic issues that have existed for generations in this city, but also to make sure we're responding to this international crisis. Thank you.
Hi, Monica, I'm with WBZ. We used to have regular new arrivals meetings where we'd find out the latest on new vendors. I think we were told at the last one that we would find out who the new vendors are in the first week of December, but we haven't heard about those yet. And we haven't heard about new numbers, about how many Chicagoans are actually being employed at these shelters. I think the last we heard it was 18% Chicagoans. So we'd love to get an update on how that's changing. The latest figures I saw from Favorit were that we're still paying people, well, we're still paying Favorit up to $2,100 a day per employee to this multinational corporation owned by a Canadian billionaire.
So could you restate your question again? I heard the editorial at the very end. What's your question?
When can we have updates on vendors, like more local vendors?
Oh, yeah, I got you. So there are some RFPs that are still being finalized. And as I said from the very beginning, again, I can't speak for what was done prior when I arrived, but I've been very upfront about challenging our department to renegotiate these contracts, but also to make sure that we are prioritizing Chicagoans. I'm still very much committed to that, and we'll get you an update soon, okay? I thank you.
Joe Barrett with the Wall Street Journal. Just back to the migrant issue, we're hearing that the numbers crossing the border right now are back to like 10,000 a day, you know, back to record levels. Without the tent city, are we going to be able to have the flexibility to deal with a new, you know, a new influx?
You know, look, as I've said, you know, often, you know, that this international crisis that has, you know, really gripped the entire world's economy, you know, I had a chance to speak with Mayor Eric Adams last week. 70% of migrants in New York are coming from the continent of Africa here in Chicago. Of course, those numbers are different. And, you know, we often talk about the City of Chicago being a world-class city. And in order to be a world-class city, you have to have a global perspective. That's what I've brought to this office. That's why I've been pushing hard on the federal government to alleviate and remove the sanctions that have been placed on many of these sovereign states. Some of the failures that have happened over the course of generations, particularly Congress, that has not passed a comprehensive immigration policy. And so now, all of that, all of that pressure, that failed policies of old that have been placed over these particular sovereign nations, you're seeing now the spill as a result of those failures. Now, as I continue to do, we have stood up shelters. You know, I think we're up to 26, almost 30 shelters. We continue to look across, not just the City of Chicago, but my team has looked across the entire state of Illinois. Like, I don't know if there's any other administration that is working as hard as the people in this administration. I mean, literally, searching for property all over the state of Illinois. Because this is a crisis, as I've said, it's not going to go away because people are upset. Now, unfortunately, you have individuals that have used this as a way to execute its meanness, and it's caused the type of strife. That type of meanness has caused the type of strife that we are experiencing now. Now, clearly, you know, as difficult as this moment has been, you know, our coalition is still remaining strong. And, you know, people have so much to say about the City of Chicago, especially those who don't live here. They should stop talking because it is this city that has come up with some structure and order of how buses arrive. It's this city that continues to hold to its values. It's this city that continues to invest in neighborhoods that have been historically disinvested in. You know, the fact that we have a real commitment for restoration and reparations, a real commitment to make sure that we are investing in those who have been formerly incarcerated, like our work hasn't stopped because of this crisis. And so our team remains committed to having the type of nimbleness that I believe that you are alluding to, and the flexibility to be able to respond to this crisis. And as I've also said, the federal government, the state government, county government, city, we all have to do more. And that's the challenge that we all have. And in the midst of us doing more, we cannot forget about the families who also need us to do more. And we're up for the challenge. We are.
Do you think they'll be back on the police station floors, though, if there's a big influx, or is the capacity there now to kind of deal with what we're going to be facing?
Well, thank you for acknowledging, I don't know if that's sort of a low high five, that we actually accomplished what I said we would do. And that's the credit to all of our departments, the full force of government. And I'm grateful to our police officers who've endured this type of recklessness for a very long time. Now, I'm going to continue to work hard to find as many spaces as possible. As you all know, that the state of Illinois has made a commitment to stand up a shelter and to house, I believe, up to 2,200 people. And we're going to continue to collaborate and work with every single level of government to make sure that we can meet the demands, but we also have to make sure that we're clear about this international crisis that does really require federal intervention.
Mayor, good afternoon. Michelle Agan with ABC 7. If I may ask, we FOIA'd the city's expenses when it came to the Brighton Park campsite. And what we found was that the city spent just under $1 million, $985,000. And what I'm wondering is, since it's been said that the state would be absorbing most of the cost, what are the costs for this site that the city was responsible for? And what are the costs for the other shelters that you are also having to renovate that the city is responsible for?
Well, look, we said from the very beginning that my commitment was to assess not just this site, but multiple sites. Because again, this international crisis has already been alluded to, the influx of migrants. I don't believe that's going to slow down, just as long as we have the type of failures and the political interests that are not aligned with the true values of our country work to prevail. And so we made this commitment to assess this site and multiple sites. You know, as far as, you know, what else we're responsible for, our team is in conversations, particularly with this site, with the owner, as we move forward. Because, you know, clearly, at least at this moment, that that site, we're not moving forward with it.
I guess the question is, where did those $1 million go? What was, what was the city was paying?
Remediation, yeah, the remediation that was needed. Obviously, the workforce, you know, all of that, the contracts to remediate, and again, the workforce.
Hey, Mayor. So the City Council rejected the arbitration ruling today, right? But last week, Jim Francick said, and with the expectation that this is likely to end up in court, that, you know, I think he said it was a steep hill to climb for the city to get a judge to rule in the city's favor on that. Doesn't that put the city in a place now where you need to go back to the negotiating table with the union and try to find out some deal to avoid having a court kind of impose this upon the city?
I don't know if that's an automatic, you know, as what was expressed eloquently by the chairman of the Budget Committee. There are a lot of, you know, policies over the course of time that have been in place. It doesn't make them right. You know, so if you're asking this body to just simply accept something because it's law, that would be the antithesis to how this stage even exists. Could you imagine if women just accepted the law and did not continue to pursue justice? Black folks, or brown folks, or Asian folks, or poor people, working people? You know, so I don't know if it automatically triggers, you know, a conversation. And as I've said repeatedly, I'm always open to discussion.
President Katanzara told me today that their last offer to the city was they would agree to some amount of transparency in the arbitration process. I believe he said posting it online after the decision had been made. But in exchange, they wanted significant healthcare savings. I believe he told me that the officers, current and retired, wouldn't pay towards their healthcare. Obviously, that would be a huge cost to the city. Is there something there where the city would be willing to incur any more costs to avoid the potential scenario where these only decided behind closed doors?
Yeah, look, the key, you know, to where we are today is that there was a vote to make sure that workers were regarded and respected with the raises that were offered. And accountability and trust with our police department, it's critical that we, in some instances, just grow it because it doesn't exist, or figure out how to restore it. You know, as far as negotiating specific details in the public, that is not my practice.
Hi, Mayor. Back to the arbitration question. How confident are you that the city could actually sustain and potentially win a legal battle related to that?
The people of Chicago have endured a great deal of pain as it relates to some very horrific acts that have been carried out by law enforcement. Now, we know this is not necessarily indicative of every single police officer. We know that. You know, what I just want to make sure that we impress upon the people of Chicago is that there's a way in which you can support workers and hold them accountable. Like, that's our responsibility. You know, how many families will we have to continue to settle lawsuits for because of just bad behavior? And this room talks a lot about transparency. And it's imperative that, as a city, that the people of Chicago know that its government is working to make sure that we're holding people accountable. And so a decision was made today to uphold the respect and the regard for those who are serving on the front line with the raises that have been put forth, while also making sure that we are responding to the people of Chicago who overwhelmingly want accountability.
Mayor, with regard to that potential legal challenge, was today's vote symbolic, in a sense, that Chicago's not going to stand for this kind of thing? Or is it a kind of an indication that you plan to fight to change the law in Illinois, which so many Aldermen referred to, saying that there has to be arbitration when public employees are involved?
It was a rejection of a portion of the contract that does not uphold to the spirit of accountability. That's what the City Council rejected today.
And Aldermen, again, in this demand for transparency, say they should have gotten that contract earlier, they should have had a chance to read it, they should have had a better idea of what was in it. What can be done, from your standpoint, to improve this process of getting stuff to Aldermen so they can understand?
Yeah, look, I mean, there's a lot of expectations that people have of our new administration because we brought in a lot of excitement. And I understand that, I respect that. I've served in the legislative branch. I can tell you, I voted on multiple contracts, and, don't quote me on this. But the last I checked, that a body that has to vote on a contract cannot be at the table to negotiate the very contract that they're going to vote on. So I just want to make sure that we level set there. And I, again, as a county commissioner, there are scores of contracts that, as a fiduciary, there would be a conflict there. Now, as far as people wanting stuff earlier, I mean, it's a healthy suggestion. Now, look, I got here seven months ago and started negotiating the moment that I took office, you know, so I don't know what practices have been done before. I don't know what expectations that people have of me that they didn't have from previous administrations, but what I can say is that I've always been very much committed to having a collaborative approach to all of the work that we do, and I still maintain that.
Hi, Mayor. In the case the city, you know, loses on the arbitration issue, are you planning at all to push the state legislature to either restore the police board's authority in these really serious discipline cases or make arbitrations more transparent?
We haven't made a decision. Today, the City Council rejected a portion of the contract that does not hold the type of accountability standards that the people of Chicago want. The City Council voted on behalf of the people of Chicago. The violation of trust that has been the prevailing form of style and play here in the City of Chicago, this body rejected that. That's a good thing. Call that democracy, and I support democracy.
Hi, Mayor. Some, including the ACLU of Illinois and Alderman Matt Martin, argued the FOP contract did not go far enough on certain accountability measures, like anonymous complaint investigation, officer's ability to amend prior statements. And in some instances, goes backwards, including an arbitrator's ability to close an investigation if it takes longer than 18 months, and relaxed requirements on body camera activation. How do you respond to that criticism?
Well, again, there were two aspects of this contract that the body considered. One, raises. Two, accountability. The body rejected the portion of the contract that doesn't adhere to the spirit of real accountability. And so, you know, I've made it very clear that I did not support the arbiter's decision there, and this body, you know, made a very resounding statement today that these egregious acts or accusations of these acts have to be spoken of and seen in the public's view.
But one could argue that's one measure of accountability, and there are a bunch of others in the economic portion of the contract that either stay in place or go backwards. How do you respond to that criticism?
Again, that there is a portion of this contract that 42 people, 43, was it 42 people voted? 42 people voted in favor of it, and seven voted against it? Again, democracy prevailed. The vote was cast, it was made, of a portion of the contract that obviously this body supported. The portion of the contract that they did not support, they rejected it.
Hi, Mayor. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
Regarding the base camp at 38th and Cal, how can residents of Brighton Park and beyond trust the city on future issues of environmental justice when you have the state EPA out here saying there are serious concerns of how the city vetted land that was to house asylum seekers?
Well, we've vetted land throughout the entire city of Chicago. And, you know, we put forth remediation based upon this temporary emergency housing that would have been established- would have been established in that particular space. And, you know, based upon the standards that our guidelines were accountable to, we provided that. Now, if there were other forms of remediation, or expanded remediation that was needed or required, I mean, that, you know, could have been a request. That request wasn't, wasn't given, but I'm very much committed to environmental justice. That's why I've stood up the department, or the Department of the Environment in my recent budget, and I'm very much committed to making sure that anything and everything and anywhere we build, that we are centering not just environmental justice, but the entire humanity of the people of Chicago.
But why not get on the same page of the state on what the right environmental standards are to use before, you know, dropping the report and saying it's safe for use?
So we were tasked with assessing not just this property, but all property. And based upon the standard that our team was working off of, we made remediation that was suited for this temporary site. Now, as far as moving forward, those conversations are going to be strengthened, and I'm very much committed to making sure that there is a clear understanding for everyone as we move forward to address this mission. And keep in mind, the mission is to make sure that these individuals who are seeking asylum have an operation that centers their dignity.
Hey, Mayor, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good to hear that. A lot of people are asking us to ask this question.
How many people?
A few people in my, my DMs.
Oh, okay, just a few people.
Was the tent base camp plan a mistake?
There were 4,000 people that were living in police districts and the airport. 4,000, sleeping outside on the floor. Now, could I ask a different question? Is it a mistake to not address the crises, to not plan for it? One would, would say resoundingly that, yes, it would be a mistake not to plan for it. I'm planning for it, with everything in me, with everything in me, of addressing this international crisis that, quite frankly, the last I checked, the entire world hasn't had an answer for this. And we've placed this incredible responsibility on the city of Chicago. So you have international policy, sanctions, and someone who is fighting for their park district, and everything else in between. Now, the goal was ultimately to decompress our police districts. I did that. We have one more left.
I have a follow-up question for planning ahead. The lease for 38th and California and the contract with Garter World are ongoing. Are there any plans to delete the lease, get out of it, or end the contract with Garter World that's costing the city millions of dollars?
Well, our, my team is in conversation with the private owner. And as soon as we have an updated, as soon as we have updated information around that conversation, we'll make that available to you. But as far as a contract with Garter World, we don't have a, do we have a contract? But, but, so the state has the contract with Garter World? Okay.
Hi, Mayor.
Hey.
Okay, so, the news of the day sounds like the city is, there are no longer migrants at police stations as of the day?
Well, there's, there's still one more district. We're working hard.
When will they be done, do you think? Like, can I say tomorrow? As of tomorrow, it's going to be...
Yeah. The last district is 12th District.
Okay.
Look, it was...
And what about the airport?
Let me just say, the people of Chicago, the, the workers of Chicago, let me just tip my hat, you know, to our OMC, our full team. You know, every single sister agency, city department, been working tirelessly to decompress these police stations. Now, just a month ago, there was, there was concern of whether or not we would be able to, to get that work complete. And, you know, I'm happy to report that because of the hard work, we just have one more district to go. So I'm confident that the work that has been done up until this point, to do what I set out to do, which was to make sure that we have an operation that centered around people's humanity, that I'm still very much committed to completing that mission.
That's the airport, too?
That includes the airport.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then Alderman Wagispak hinted that, that the city's going to have a hard time putting together a budget for next year. Do you have a plan for Springfield? Who are you sending down? Do you have, like, is there some, something up your sleeve you could share if that's what you want to do?
Well, I'm not a magician, so there's nothing up my sleeve. But what I will say is, like, you know, I'm grateful that we have a very strong IGA team in full operation that has led to some of the most progressive policies that have passed in a generation in the city of Chicago. We will obviously have a very full Springfield operation. As far as our projections for next year, I had those conversations when I announced my budget plan last January. So this is not breaking news for me. The fiscal cliff that, that many of our key public accommodations are facing, that's not new news, right? And so, you know, I'm going to work hard with our General Assembly, as well as the city council, as well as the federal government, to make sure that we are meeting the demands of this moment.
Mayor, I'll try to make a quick one here, just trying to follow up with the arbitration thing. Because speaking to Scott Wagispak, he said, basically, because state law guarantees the right to arbitration, and the arbitrator's already said that, if you have to go back to him now after this vote, it's got to end up in court. Am I understanding that correctly? Or, I mean, what are the next steps for the city, if the arbitrator already said, look, this is state law, I've got to abide by it, you've got to abide by it?
Well, look, I mean, I mean, I guess it's not necessarily automatic that there would be a lawsuit. I mean, no lawsuit was filed today unless something happened while those lights went off. You know, but again, you know, the people of Chicago really want a workforce, police force that can be held accountable. And today, a message was sent very clear that what the arbiter recommended, that the people of Chicago rejected.
The other thing I wanted to ask you about was the new rules of order. There was a whole bunch of people that lined up, and yet, today, once again, you know, you gave several orders, we heard the audio going beforehand with the rules. What happened today? And are you disappointed that people didn't, you know, show respect for the chamber and what was going on in there?
Well, look, there are a number of city council members that have brought to my attention that, you know, they were concerned about their safety. And I've said, you know, repeatedly, and I'll say it again, I'm going to continue to work with our city council members who, who have felt unsafe or less safe in the chambers. Look, there are very spirited debates, there's an incredible amount of contention that exists all over the country. My tolerance for, for certain behavior might be different than others, and it could have something to do with the fact that I was a public school teacher, or growing up in a house with nine siblings and foster siblings, you know? And there's been real concern about safety. And so, look, I would hope that people would come to city council to voice their opinion without provocation. I would hope that, but, you know, I guess that's the one thing that I do not control as mayor, are people's motives, and how they articulate their disappointment, or even their rage. But clearly, it, government prevailed today. It didn't stop us from being able to deliver the service that the people of Chicago elected us to do, you know? And, you know, I would hope that people would be far more respectful of how, you know, they, they, they express their, their dissent. And, you know, I guess for, for whatever it's worth, I was told that the viewership of city council has gone up significantly. And I'm, I'm not suggesting that the city council, you know, proposes some sort of pay-per-view element to raise revenue for key critical services, but what it does tell us, though, that people are very much engaged. I think that's a testament to who we are. You know, once upon a time, government perhaps did not give people the space to believe that their voices actually matter. The fact that people believe that their voices matter and they're showing up, that's a good sign. And now we just have to make sure that we level set, so that people feel safe when they come to work, and voices can be expressed, you know, without the type of disrespect and disruption that unfortunately has happened in these first, you know, few city council meetings.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Well, since the first Craig asked the question about the decorum in the chamber, let me ask you about, I understand you were in Washington part of last week. Can you tell us about what you may have been able to either take there, as far as, you know, what you want, or bring home?
So, these trips to DC, I will just say that, that the engagement with the White House, I actually appreciate. And, you know, I mean, it's pretty well documented that everybody is grappling with this crisis, that everyone is. And the White House continues to demonstrate, at least, in its verbiage towards us, how much they appreciate the way we are really working hard to solve this collaboratively. Now, as far as, you know, these votes that will be taking place soon, as you all know, there are some very convoluted, complicated arrangements to be able to secure funding for a variety of measures, including, you know, you know, these conflicts that are happening around the globe. And I've made my point very clear with other mayors, it wasn't just me. As I said, Mayor Eric Adams continues to push, you know, the mayor of Denver, the mayor of, of, of some of these other smaller towns that are, that are impacted, even some of the mayors who actually want to have a more national-coordinated effort, because there are cities that have made it very clear that they want the workforce, we just have to do it with some dignity. And so my number is still pretty much clear. You know, I think it's a conservative number, a $5 billion for the country, but we did not get necessarily a strong commitment for that number, but we did get a commitment that there will be a number. We just have to push for a larger number, at least for now.
I was going to ask, is it that you're appreciating how artfully they say no?
No, what I'm saying is, is that, that the White House has been very clear that my leadership in Chicago, it's, it's a model for the rest of the country. You all, see, there are people who are passing our ordinance, right? Around how we regulate buses. You know, our neighboring village, just to the west of me, in Austin, Oak Park, saying, look, we'll step up. And so there are more, you know, smaller towns that are saying, look, we can play a part. You know, keep in mind, you all, there are 102 counties and 1,300 municipalities in the sanctuary state. And there are regional leaders that know that a strong workforce in their respective communities could lead towards a stronger tax base that allows for the type of economic development that we want to see across this country. So it's not that I'm impressed by the, the no, because no one has said no. What they've said is they're going to have to continue to work to put together the votes because there are other complicated elements attached to these resources that have to be addressed as well. So, but thank you for that question. Is that everyone? All right, thank you all very much, and happy holidays.